Okay. Good evening. That's first item is let's call to order the planning and zoning meeting for today, February 13th. Second order item is the approval of the order of the agenda as published.
Move to approve?
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Next item, approval of the minutes from January 9th, 2024.
Motion that we approve them as digitally reproduced.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from January 9th meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Regular agenda, item one, this is a public hearing, A 24-1, Dakota Territory 15th Edition, a request for planned unit development at 1018 17th Street East to build townhouse style apartments, lot 1, block 1 of Dakota Territory 14th Edition, Sankey. And the note here that it's wished to be continued to the March 12th meeting. Is there anybody that here that wishes to speak to this topic? Okay, none? Shall we vote to continue to the next meeting? Take a motion?
We have to take a motion to that?
Or not?
I don't believe you need to make a motion.
Okay, anybody opposed to us continuing? Okay, then we will continue this topic to the next meeting. Item number two, this is a public hearing, A 24-2, Sand Hills, 8th Edition, a request for subdivision and zoning change from A to light industrial and public for an industrial development located west of 26th Street Northwest and south of 4th Avenue Northwest, lots 1, 2, and 8 through 11, and parts of block 21, 22, block 4, lots 3, 12 through 15, and 17, 18, block 5, lots 5 through 9, this is a mouthful, sorry, 11 and 12, and 14 to 19, block 8, and lots 1 and 2, block 9 of Meadow Brook Park subdivision, lot 1, block 2, and lot 1, block 3 of Sand Hills 3rd Edition, and lot 1, block 1 of Sand Hills 5th Edition, lot 1 and 2 in block 1, lot 1, block 2, lots 1 and 2 in block 3 of Sand Hills 6th Edition, lot 1, block 1 of Sand Hills 7th Edition. Nelson.
All right.
Hope I got that right.
Thank you, and good afternoon commissioners. So this item is titled Sand Hills 8th Edition, this is a request for a rezone and subdivision replat, including right-of-way vacation and some bits of right-of-way dedication. The subject property includes about 43 acres of land located west of 26th Street Northwest and north of I-94, I've got the aerial image from your packet pulled up here. Please note that the line work is a little bit outdated, you may recall. This commission took action on the Sand Hills 6th Edition not too long ago, as well as the Sand Hills 7th Edition, and those two subdivisions.
Will this be the last edition of Sand Hills?
We'll see. Maybe, maybe not. And so the line work shown on the images here do not reflect what was recently approved by the city commission in terms of Sand Hills 6th and 7th, so I just want to make that quick note. The applicant, the application is represented by Ocho Indy LLC.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, talking about the yellow lines on here.
Correct, the yellow lines are the lines.
But the bluish line is what this 8th Edition is?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
That's the outline of the plat boundary there, the blue line. This application is, comes forth brought to you by Ocho Indy LLC, represented today by Kyle McCammy of Anclave Development, as well as RJR is another owner, part of this application, represented by Nancy Peterson, who are here today if you have any questions on behalf of the applicant. The overall purpose of this application is to establish development entitlements for future industrial development of the property. I will also note that you should all have an updated subdivision plat, that was a lay-down item in front of you, that we did receive an updated plat after the publication of the meeting packet, and so I will hold that open on the screen here in front of you as well for reference. The proposed subdivision would plat the property into 11 to 12 lots on 2 blocks. I say 11 to 12 because lot 7 on the updated plat does include portion, or does include lot 8 on that previous version of the plat. We are working with the applicant right now on the details of lot 7 and 8, so those are subject to change, so I do want to point that out as well. The subdivision, as I noted, does include some areas of dedication. Specifically, there is dedication provided for 26th Street Northwest, which is a future arterial roadway, and so the city is looking for 75 feet of right-of-way dedication from the centerline of that roadway for future additions of travel lanes and such. Also included on the plat, these hatched areas here include areas of vacation of right-of-way. Right-of-way for Gress Avenue and Park Boulevard were originally platted with the original Meadow Brook Park subdivision when this area was in the county back in the 1950s. This is kind of a continuing theme that you may recall from the Sand Hills 6th Edition in terms of the applicant buying up and kind of consolidating a lot of the individual properties within this area, and is now coming forth to vacate some of the previous line work, previous rights of way that were never really improved in order to kind of bring it up to standards for modern industrial development. You will send the subdivision plat, and if you flip to the second page of that updated plat, there is kind of a zoomed-in view of the northeast portion of that subdivision. Where Gress Avenue, most of Gress Avenue to the west is proposed to be vacated with this plat. There will be a portion of Gress Avenue that remains because there are 2 existing homes that take access off of Gress Avenue that will remain as of today. Because Gress Avenue will be vacated to the west, there is included a 110-foot by 110-foot public access easement, the purpose of that easement is to provide for cul-de-sac turnaround of Gress Avenue because that right-of-way will be dead-ending now on the west end. Also included on the plat is some access control, so this dashed line along Gress Avenue, for example, are areas of access control where access, such as a driveway, vehicular access in and out of a lot, would not be allowed. The purpose there is to restrict Gress Avenue to be used only by those existing residential lots, and to restrict any access from any of the adjacent commercial activity there. Zooming back out to the first page of that plat, there are remnant pieces of right-of-way to the west of 30th Street that will also be vacated, you'll see 2 stubs there, 1 for Gress Avenue, and 1 on the very west end of what is now 3rd Avenue Northwest. Those were remnants from the previous Sand Hills 6th and Sand Hills 7th Editions, which will be cleaned up with this plat as well. The proposed zone change would rezone the property from a mix of A agricultural, LI light industrial, and P public facilities to the proposed LI light industrial for a majority of these proposed lots, and then to P public facilities for lot 7, which would be the city-owned Stormwater Pond lot. Included in your meeting packet is a zoning diagram that kind of illustrates what is, what's going on with the zoning changes in this area here, and so I would just call your attention to that graphic for some specifics on which areas are being zoned what. But for the most part, everything within the subdivision other than the city lot 7, block 2 would be LI, and then lot 7, block 2 would be zoned P. Public land dedication, as with any subdivision, within the city of West Fargo, subdivisions are subject to land dedication. Industrial subdivisions are subject to a 5% dedication in terms of land area. There are portions of this subdivision that are being replatted. Some of those portions of the subject property have previously provided land dedication with those previous subdivisions, and so those areas would be exempt from that requirement. However, any areas of the subdivision that have not previously provided that land dedication would be required to do so. So we would be looking for a dedication agreement to be drafted prior to the approval of the final plat to incorporate those details. The Park District has indicated they have no need for any public facilities within this area, and so the recommendation from staff would be to receive fee in lieu of the land dedication for this subdivision. Utility services are existing within 4th Avenue Northwest and will be installed within 30th Street and 33rd Avenue, excuse me, Northwest, with the existing public improvement project that was created with the Sand Hills 6th Edition. To expand regional stormwater retention within this area, the development does propose the city to acquire some additional properties, again, within that lot 7, block 2. You can see on the infrastructure graphic included in the packet here, with the acquisition of the additional lots and the vacation of that portion of Park Boulevard, the intention would be to merge 2 existing stormwater lots into 1 larger stormwater lot to increase the regional stormwater capacity within this area. A subdivision development agreement would be needed to formalize the details of that land acquisition, and again, that would be something that we would be looking for prior to final plat consideration by the city commission. Let's see. And then lastly, in relation to the subdivision plat, the last thing I would just call your attention to is that the subdivision does include some dedication for utility easements. Specifically, there is, if you were to look at page 2 on the updated plat here, you can kind of see running across lot 3, block 2, there is a 15-foot water main easement, 10-foot utility easement, and there's an existing 20-foot sanitary, or excuse me, a new 20-foot sanitary sewer easement that would connect essentially Gress Avenue to 4th Avenue. And the purpose of that is, the existing homes in this area are on private well and septic systems, and so these easements would provide the opportunity for a connection to city services if and when any such connection might be needed for those properties. Legal notices were published in the paper and mailed out to property owners within 150 feet of the development. As of today, staff has received no comments in relation to the proposal. Overall, as outlined in the staff report, staff finds proposed subdivision rezone to be consistent with city plans and ordinances. And with that, the recommended action here today is to hold a public hearing, and then to approve the proposed rezoning and subdivision with the condition that the applicant continues to work with staff as to the details of public land dedication and acquisition of land for regional Stormwater Pond, and that a signed dedication agreement and signed subdivision development agreement are submitted outlining such details. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. I'd like to open it for comment, question, or input from the public at this time. Is there anybody that wishes to comment or input to this topic at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that section. So commissioners, questions? This is a complicated one, it took me a while to understand what we were doing.
There's a lot going on with it.
But I'm sure John has it all figured out. Is there any land left around there that has not been zoned to light industrial or, at this left? Is it, there's just the houses on the bottom corner there? Or the lot, I shouldn't say houses, the lots?
Yep, so this graphic attached to the staff report here kind of illustrates what's going on with the zoning. In quick summary, the areas hatched in kind of this blue color here are the areas that are existing light industrial zoning. The areas in the green hatching are the areas that are zoned P, or public facilities. The areas in orange are the areas that would be the remaining areas that are within the agricultural zoning district, and so that would include 3 lots on Gress Avenue, again, 2 of which have existing homes on them, 1 of which is a vacant lot.
Yeah, I was just speaking to the larger area. This whole section then will be done?
Yeah, so again, this is the aerial image and the zoning graphic that's included, that's the standard, you know, attachment to the staff report, again, is outdated. We don't have our GIS layer quite up to date with the recentness of the Sand Hills 6th and 7th, but the area to the north is already within the limited industrial zoning district, the area to the east is also limited industrial. There is also an existing residence on the north side of 4th Avenue, which is still within the agricultural zoning district. And then the Sand Hills Archery has some land to the northwest that is also within the agricultural zoning district.
Questions? I would take a motion.
Is it just one question, these lots, these small lots that are still being left as an ag-zoned area? Yes, do we, do we really have any options there? I guess if they're not included in the plat and they're not signing off to zoning change, it sort of just remains as is? Is that kind of what it boils down to?
Correct, yep. The, I believe, and I'll let the applicant speak to this if you'd like, but I believe they have reached out and had some level of contact with those property owners, I believe they would like, be interested in having conversations about potential acquisition, but at this time, they are not included in the subject property here, they're not included in the subdivision, and so they would remain, you know, in their current state essentially within the agricultural zoning district. So they are, you know, grandfathered as existing, we wouldn't allow, you know, a new home to be built on a lot this size in agriculture zoning district, but they are grandfathered as existing essentially.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision and the rezoning with the recommendations of staff.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application as presented. Any further discussion required before vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Excellent job, by the way, on preparing this material. As complicated as it is. So the next item, are there any non-agenda items to be discussed? So then adjourn from the regular agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to adjourn from the regular agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, adjourn from the regular agenda, so we can move to discussion items. And we've got proposed revisions to Title 4 ordinances regarding off-street parking, pool fences, and backyard chicken keeping. But no roosters.
No roosters. All right. So included in your meeting pack tonight is a memorandum that kind of outlines what we're looking to talk to you guys about tonight. In summary, I think been a few months ago, I think back in November of 2023, we kind of introduced the idea that staff would be bringing forward a series of potential text amendments for your consideration over a series of months, and so this is really kind of step number 1 in what will likely be a multi-month, multi-topic process over the course of the next probably, you know, 4 to 6 months or so, give or take. This all comes from, back to the West Fargo Planning Needs Assessment Action Plan that was put together in 2023. The kind of short-term, or excuse me, the targeted updates to Title 4 was identified as a short-term project as part of that action plan, and so that's essentially what we're working through right now. The off-street parking requirements, or excuse me, off-street parking regulations is one of those items that we're kind of looking to update, you know, pretty substantially and holistically in terms of that section alone. In addition to that, we have had a couple of other things that have come up that we've added to the discussion tonight with the intent of bringing this back next month or in a future month for recommendation for action. The process for any modifications to the Title 4 ordinances is that the Planning and Zoning Commission would have a public hearing, make a recommendation to the city commission, the city commission would then hold a second public hearing, and then take action on those ordinances. And so this is really the first step in a multi-step process, again, based on some of the direction from the Planning and Zoning Commission previously, our intent is to bring these items to you first for discussion purposes. That gives you all a chance to kind of think about it over the course of a month at least, before we bring something forward with some, you know, specific red lines and some specific requests for action. And so that's kind of the high-level summary of what we're looking to do tonight. I don't have anything, you know, super formal for you here, I wanted to keep it pretty open-ended, but I would propose that we just kind of take these one at a time, I can kind of walk through what we're looking to do for each of these 3 categories, and then certainly kind of answer some questions along the way. So with that, just to kind of dive right in then to the first item, the off-street parking regulations, kind of the high-level summary of the changes that we're looking to make here, we kind of categorized into 3 things here. First of all, just restructuring the content for purposes of clarity and ease of use. Right now, the ordinance is, and this is kind of a common theme you'll see throughout Title 4, is there's a lot of, you know, paragraph text. It's not, not a lot of, not a lot of things are broken up into lists and, you know, subsections, and so you will see a pretty substantial change in terms of what's being proposed, in terms of the organization, in terms of navigating the ordinance and ease of use for folks that are less familiar with ordinances. The second thing is updating our minimum parking standards. So one of the things we're looking to update is, a lot of our ordinances are based off of things like number of staff on the largest shift for any, you know, for a given business. You know, as buildings change and different businesses move in and out, those can be, you know, sometimes drastically different numbers. And so what we're looking to do is have the parking, minimum parking requirements based more on the physical attributes of the property, so things like gross square footage, or square footage of area accessible to the public, things like that, that are measurable and a little bit more straightforward. The second thing we're doing, looking to do is to do some calibration of our minimum parking standards in relation to pure cities and some modern best practices. And so what you'll see is kind of across the board, we're looking to slightly reduce the number of off-street parking requirements. You know, some more than others, but I think you'll see kind of a standard, a pretty common theme of some reductions in those overall requirements. That's not to say that a business, you know, can't provide as much parking as they want. We're not proposing anything like parking maximums or anything like that. It's just the minimum mandated parking numbers that we're talking about. And then lastly, the thing I would point out is some of the parking reduction options. We're kind of proposing an administrative approval process for minor reductions to the minimum requirements, and I'll talk more specifically about those in a moment.
So this means like during a permitting process, if somebody wants to build something with below the minimums, it would not become topic for this group, but it would just be handled at the administrative level?
That's the intent, if it's just a pretty minor reduction, it could be handled at the administrative level. If it's a more substantial reduction, we would still want it to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
How do you distinguish between minor and substantial?
I'll, I'll get into that in a moment, I don't want to say the wrong numbers here, but I think it's something like 25%.
Okay, so there's some specific criteria as far as
Correct.
a percentage or a number of slots or things like that?
Yep, it would be something measurable, so either they are above or below the cutoff threshold essentially. So, and then there's a lot of kind of minor tweaks to the language overall as well, so that's kind of the high-level summary.
I also noticed when reading through it, there was a lot of parking study work done with the 3, or at least the 2 cities here. Is there going to be other alignment with how they are calling out the parking standards, or is it more for reference?
Yeah, so included in the packet too is the, I think it was 2018-ish parking and access study that Fargo and West Fargo jointly did with, or through MetroCog. The reason that that was included is because that does touch on off-street parking. As part of that study, the consultant team actually did go out and take some parking counts of various businesses and mixed-use developments within Fargo and West Fargo, as well as residential uses. And you'll see, if you were to read through that document, there are some, you know, pretty substantial variations in terms of what parking is supplied and what parking is actually utilized on a daily basis. And so that's just kind of one, you know, one point of reference that kind of goes into the discussion, and so some of the other, where we're kind of getting these numbers from, 1 is we're working with Clarion Associates, they're a national planning consulting firm that, that's kind of what they do, is do development ordinances across the country, and so they've got a pretty good working knowledge of what's worked in other communities across the country, which is why we're kind of leaning on them to help us out with some of these. 2, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they maintain a parking demand, I forget the name of the book, but essentially it's a big fat book of parking counts from across the country as well in terms of different land uses and the number of parking that's being utilized in association with those various land uses. We also took a look at some of our peer communities, mainly Fargo and Morehead, to take a look at what their parking numbers are because we don't want to be, you know, substantially different on anything either. And so for the most part, we're, I think, relatively in line with what some of their requirements are. But those are some of the, I guess, factors that went into some of the numbers that we're proposing here, just to kind of give you that frame of reference as well. So with that, attached to the memo, the first thing you'll see in there, these are, this is kind of the draft working document as it exists today, in terms of what we're looking to potentially bring forward to you in a month. Again, you'll see there is some restructuring, so it is kind of a little hard to compare apples to apples. Kind of considered, you know, should we include some red lines, but it would have been kind of a total mess and really hard to read, so I do apologize. It is kind of a little, little difficult to flip back and forth between what we're proposing and what our current standards are. But essentially, we've got a, it starts with a purpose statement, you know, why do we have these regulations to begin with? applicability, some of these are new and I think will be very beneficial. For example, when there is a change in use, when, you know, an old, an office building changes hands and a new business comes in, and all of a sudden they start doing retail. Retail oftentimes might require some additional parking as opposed to some type of an office, and so how do we handle that kind of situation? And here, it's really, if it's, you know, if it requires 20% more parking, that's when we start asking them to provide some additional parking. It's not if you, if the new use requires 1 extra spot, we're not going to make them, you know, pave 1 extra spot, for example. Also deals with expansion or enlargement, kind of a similar situation. Parking loading plan requirements, this is just stating that a, a parking and loading plan is required for development. Required off-street parking, uh, this just refers you down to the, the table below, which I'll talk about in a moment. References to accessible space requirements, uh, here it's just a reference to the building codes, which, uh, which basically, um, outlines what's required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, in terms of, striping and signing of those types of spots. Unlisted uses, um, here it just talks about how, how to handle any use that is not specifically called out specifically in the parking table. Um, and, and essentially it, um, provides or allows staff to just make a, make a call on what is the most similar use existing, um, in, in the table. Because it's, it's unrealistic to expect that we're going to have every single possible use, um, included in a, in an ordinance. Um, so the table itself though, uh, we did try and follow kind of the existing land uses that we have in our existing, uh, uses listed. We did remove some of the outdated things, um, in there, like, uh, blanking on now, but, uh, dance halls and, um,
DVD rental.
Yeah, convents, different things like that, that are a little bit more, you know, you're rarely going to see something like that. And in those cases, we will make an interpretation based on, um, the uses provided. Um, but essentially it's, it's broken up by, um, kind of major categories. So your residential uses, I don't think anything's really changing there. Civic and institutional uses, your daycare centers, libraries, museums, schools, healthcare services, um, and I'm not going to, I guess, read all the, the requirements here, but if you do have questions on any of them, uh, certainly let me know. Commercial uses, uh, or anything not specifically called out for commercial, kind of the default is one per four hundred square feet of floor area.
Where do churches fall?
Churches are one per five seats of seating capacity. So any, any kind of gathering space, whether it's a church or a recreational facility, uh, kind of the one per five seats in the main assembly area is, is kind of how we're handling, uh, those types of uses. Same with theaters or, um, stadiums, things like that. Uh, food and beverage is one of the higher, um, higher demand, uh, higher parking demand, um, types of land uses. And so that's one per one hundred square feet.
That's total building space or is that?
Yep.
The kitchen and?
So it's, yeah, gross square footage of the, the building unless it's indicated otherwise. And we'll, I think we need to kind of tweak how we're clarifying some of that. Things like the industrial uses, um, that's a little bit unique. We, um, this is very similar to Fargo's ordinance, actually, in terms of, you know, the various different types of industrial uses, whether it's a, you know, contractor business with a shop and a yard or a, you know, freight distribution facility, wholesale, um, even plant nurseries and landscaping businesses. It's one, one parking space for four hundred square feet of office or administrative area, one per five hundred square feet of indoor sales or service areas, uh, one per one thousand square feet of outdoor sales or service areas, and then one per twenty-five hundred square feet of any sort of storage or warehousing, um, kind of mass.
So on this, on these numbers here, the one per four hundred, one per three hundred, one per two fifty, are these changed at all from what is, what we have right now or?
They are, yes.
And how much did they change? And so if I go look at a grocery store or supermarket before, it used to be one per how many square feet? I mean, do we?
So also included in the packet as an attachment is our existing regulations. So I'm just gonna.
I'll be honest, I did not read all the way.
Well, that's, that's all right. I'll just flip that open quick. So, so right now, for example, the grocery store, supermarket, our current ordinance requires one space per two hundred square feet of gross floor area or customer sales and service area, plus one space per two hundred square feet gross floor area of storage. And so the proposal.
Is one per two hundred? Yeah, that's, you were right there with the grocery store.
Oh, yeah.
Retail uses.
Two fifty.
So, yeah, but simplified, but I, I wouldn't be able to figure out how much reduction. I mean, for the one piece, it's twenty-five percent reduction. But then there's that other piece for the warehouse portion that is no longer required.
So the, the intent here would be that it'd be just the gross floor area. So we would take the, the whole footprint of the whole grocery store, s- storage area, office area.
Not distinguishing between the two subcategories of space.
And even, you know, our current ordinance, it's, I mean, both categories are both two hundred. So I, it's kind of redundant and, you know, in that regard, for example.
Okay, so regardless, we're reducing it by twenty-five percent. And those numbers are all based on that two thousand and eighteen study as far as recommended or?
No, they're based on a combination of, um, recommendations from Clarion Associates, uh, some of our partner or sister cities, and then the I T E Parking Generation Manual. So those are the, the three primary sources of information that, that we kind of sifted through to arrive at some of these numbers. So they don't all come from one place. There, there is really no, there's no science to this. I mean, it is observation and what, what, what's been observed elsewhere is, is really the, the kind of best way to gauge what the, the potential demand is. And I would say at the end of the day, ultimately, um, that is kind of the way that the, the industry or the, the way that the field is moving is towards, um, you know, letting kind of the market decide how much parking is, is needed for a given business. And so the, uh, the concern with that municipalities might have is the overflow parking. Do we have enough on-street parking? You know, we do have on-street parking that is intended to be used. It, it is a substantial cost to create that on-street parking. And so in, in certain ways, it is good that we, we kind of take, uh, or better utilize some of the infrastructure that we do build. And so that's kind of getting in the weeds on some of the, the theory behind it, but, um.
Question on the, uh, vehicle repair and maintenance services. Is that anywhere near adequate? Uh, I'm gonna just, I'll congratulate on being very successful, Firestone and United Automotive. Now Firestone doesn't have, does not or has next to no off-street parking available to them because of around the corner Thirteenth and Ninth Street. And the problem with, it depends on the kind of vehicle repair service you're talking. If you're a quick, fast oil change, probably the customer's coming in, bringing their car, sitting in the, having a cup of coffee while you're changing your oil, you're going to be leaving. But, uh, real repair center, number one, you have to get staged to get in, and then they may need to get parts and they may be sitting there, you know, in advance of getting repaired. And then they're sitting there to be picked up. And I'm just saying, should that maybe be split out into facility type? Because, say, God bless them, I, I don't use Firestone because I wouldn't even know how to get in there to drive there. They're so triple parked everywhere around there and that's not their fault. They're obviously successful. And they have no off-street parking, but
Yep.
Uh, just, just something, when you're considering that, and if you think around town, similar facilities are in the same scenario, I think.
Yeah, and that kind of gets to the point I'm, what's going on in my head is while I, I understand the whole, the general direction is reduction of required parking in general. But then how do we get to what the appropriate number? Because there's, there's, there's an example of, well, heck, maybe there's a, shouldn't be, that way it should be going to an increase, but, you know, I don't.
And honestly, th- this is kind of why, where, to a certain degree, it does boil down to a, a policy decision in terms of how much does the city want to dictate how much parking a business needs to have and how much of that should be a business decision for the business? And what are the, you know, pros and cons? There's, there's pros and cons to each. Um, you know, there's certainly inconvenience perhaps to the, the public that's trying to use those business, businesses, but, you know, ultimately, what is the impact to the public? I think is what we should be trying to ask ourselves when it comes to identifying the proper numbers. Um, and so.
How do we do that exercise? To answer that question?
Who is it? It's a little dress. Because like, you don't go to Jipu or that Firestone because it's, I don't go there either. And if I pull up to Target, which I know is Fargo, and the parking lot is full, I feel like this, I could think of where the parking lot actually gets like all the way full. I just don't go. I'll go somewhere else. You know what I mean? So from a business perspective, I think it, it makes sense to them to have the adequate parking. And if they're choosing not to have it, it's hurting their business as long as people aren't inconveniencing neighbors by parking on the street. But I'm not going to go to Target and park on Thirteenth Avenue because I don't have a parking spot. I'm just.
I, I'd agree. The only thing is I'm saying that, and I wouldn't touch them with anything we got, you know, change or anything else, but as we're going forward now, they're building a new tire repair center out by Costco. Lot of doors on that thing. It's gonna have a lot of vehicles. Now, if they're just changing oil, they're going to be in and out. But if all of a sudden they're doing repair service and, you know, God bless them if they are, there's going to be cars waiting to get in, cars that are in, and they don't do one car per day per bay. They do several cars per day, per bay. And then they're going to be sitting there to get picked up and that's, looks a little bigger down there, but that's a pretty good sized facility. And that's great. I'm just saying, if we're going to change something like this, we should, I think, like, uh, the chairman is pointing out here is we should contemplate, you know, maybe it's, it, it's, you know, to reduce is one thing, but maybe there's scenarios where we maybe have to look at, city has to say, we really need a little more just because of experience.
And if this is going to be a proposal that's presented the next month, it'll have the specific numbers on there.
Yep. And so we do want your feedback, and this is exactly the kind of conversation we want to have with you, is if there are things that seem off or you would like us to kind of take a closer look at, that's what we want to hear. And so between now and next month, we'll take a look at, you know, the quick loops versus the standard repair, you know, I mean, there are, I have seen ordinances where cities do make a distinction between, between those services, for example. And so if there's other uses too that you see, and I should have mentioned this when I started, we want to have any comments you have here tonight, but certainly, you know, take some time with this over the next, uh, you know, preferably a week or two, you know, not too much longer than that, uh, just to make sure that we've got some time to kind of make some revisions and, and do a little extra homework as needed. Um, but reach out with, to, to any of us staff with any comments or any other, uh, you know, feedback that you want to provide. But certainly want to have whatever, whatever conversation you like here tonight as well.
And our neighboring city, Fargo, we are tr- we are trying to have some level of
Consistency.
harmony, consistency, if that a word.
I think that's important.
Uh, important. So is this consistent then with the different categories with what they?
Yeah, I'd say it's, it's consistent insofar as Fargo relies more heavily on gross square footage as opposed to number of staff on a given shift. I, I think we're pretty in, similar to some of these uses. I will say a lot of what we're proposing is maybe slightly less requirement than what Fargo has currently. Uh, but I will also say, just, um, based on my, my past experience, uh, there is some intention, I believe, that Fargo has to, you know, take a look at their, um, land development code in the not-too-distant future as well, uh, which would not surprise me if, uh, you know, they're looking at some reductions as well in the not-too-distant future. So I just, for what it's worth.
Aaron, is there any consideration to the, I guess we'll say either zoning or adjacent zoning for the specific property? Target example is, you know, we're not too many people are going to park on Thirteenth Avenue.
Right. But if Target was in a residential or ordered residential, that would be really annoying for the people that live there.
So I can see where the city can't just wash their hands of this completely and leave it all in the hands of the market because there are those businesses that are either in or adjacent to a residential area where you're going to have parking complaints. So does the zoning influence what's allowed? Obviously, the business needs to be allowable to be there, but there can be.
Yeah. I'll try and answer this. Let me know if I'm not answering your question. But, uh, there are cities, you can find examples probably all across the country that do different things. Some cities do wash their hands of it and say, we don't require any parking, let the market decide. There are also cities that, you know, Fargo is an example where their downtown mixed-use zoning district, for example, there are no parking requirements in that zoning district specifically. Other zoning districts, they have standards that apply, and then they have a district next to the university that's maybe slightly less parking. And so there is different classifications of parking requirements based on zoning district, um, in that, um, example for, um, there. And so there is any number of different ways to, to kind of slice that. Um, when it comes to impacts on adjacent neighbors, that's where you start entering into just the, the parking management or on-street parking management, whether that's through, um, time zones and different things. And that's very common in, uh, specifically in urban or downtown environments where, um, you can, the cities start to kind of get, get a little more fine-grained in terms of, you know, I'll just use downtown Fargo, for example, on Broadway, parking is limited to, you know, a shorter timeframe than off-Broadway. And so that's how they kind of manage turnover and, um, um, parking in that regard. Other areas like, uh, you know, major universities, that's kind of a common problem whenever you have a, a large university next to residential areas. They have, you know, students coming to campus, don't necessarily want to pay for parking or pay for a parking pass or whatnot. Uh, there again, then the, the kind of solution there, best practice is just the, the park, on-street parking management in, in that regard. And so. But there is definitely conflict there and there are, you know, residents that, that do feel impacted by those decisions as well. So I don't want to, certainly don't want to discount that.
Are, are categories somewhat similar with our previous cities? So the, like, Jipu example? The categories for that they would get the same.
Yeah, um, every city kind of has their own categories or definitions for land uses. And so there are some slight differences just in the way that, um, your different codes are structured. Uh, I think what I can do is I can include, you know, Fargo and Morehead and maybe some other, um, jurisdictions from the region in terms of their parking requirements, just to kind of give you some frame of reference as well.
Be helpful.
Yeah. So, uh, yes and no, to answer your question specifically.
You guys have been, as staff, you've been through this pretty thoroughly and you've examined all these sources of recommendations or suggestions.
We've tried to. But, um, you know, like I said, it's.
This is more than a first stab at it.
I would never be perfect.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right.
Years, blocks there with all those, uh, starts out, the vision of the places, a lawyer's office with one lawyer and one client or whatever. All of a sudden, then he sells a building, gets his, you know, and sells it to the airport. And they got three stylists, six clients, and you got a little street with a bunch of little driveways going into these little parking lots. And every one of those businesses, what are buildings when they're built, we had the parking requirements because of the type of business and size and stuff like that. Dynamics changes, businesses change. All of a sudden, you know, a bigger place opens across the street. That's, and there you go, it expands. So it changes. There's no, you're not going to have a perfect solution, but I just think we need to be able to contemplate what could possibly go on. I'm not, but all right, being paranoid, all of a sudden, maybe I'm just, uh, seeing this, or this, or something, you never had a parking lot ever again.
Nope, there's, there's a kind of negative consequences on, on both sides. And so it's, it's really hard to hit that sweet spot, that's for sure. Yep.
First one was the seven block. Oh, they have parking, you know, requirements. You know, you know, it's all over there. It's just very good.
Mm-hmm.
Very successful. Good for them, sure for the city. Also, it's a lot of cars.
I will say, this is a thousand times more readable. Like, wow, that was fantastic.
Maybe just one other question. As staff, are you getting a lot of questions, concerns, challenges to our current working ordinance? And that's obviously what's prompting some revisions.
Uh, I'd say in the downtown area specifically, I think, you know, probably, and don't quote me on this, but probably most of the businesses that have come downtown in the last five years have requested a parking reduction. And so, you know, when you have that too, we have a, a process that we bring them through and, and, you know, that's another thing to consider too is, um, you know, there, there is staff time that goes into that and, you know, that takes our attention away from other things. And so the more we can rely less. the more we can rely less on kind of these individual customized processes and 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 just kind of, if we're okay with, you know, some slight reductions downtown, let's just make it okay and kind of remove some of that red tape. That's probably the biggest area that that we've probably seen or gotten comment on. Um, and then I think, uh, yeah, I kind of, I don't know, we really touched on it, but there are, and I can do a better job of outlining this, but, you know, the just the the cost of overparking too, um, not just for the businesses, but, you know, you're kind of, parking lot size and relate, if you look down 13th Avenue, for example, most of the lot is dedicated to off-street parking. It's actually much larger than the building itself. And so when we have most of those parking lots that are not used, that's just wasted space. That's extra infrastructure that we're building as a city to extend utilities that much further. And so these costs are kind of unseen and they may seem, you know, relatively small on the individual lot scale. But once you kind of multiply that across the city, uh, it is pretty substantial in terms of the amount of public cost that is essentially wasted on underutilized or non non-used space within city limits. Uh, and then as we look to the F and diversion, you know, that's a, land is at a premium. And so it's a, that that's kind of the the other kind of side of the coin that I do want to make sure that is part of the conversation as well. So, sorry to get off topic there. If there's no other questions on the the table, I can kind of move on here. Um, the next section is district-specific parking standards. And so this just talks about if there's any kind of unique things or, um, references to specific districts, so residential districts. You're noting that you can't, you know, just have a parking lot in your front yard, for example. The parking has to be in the driveway or in the rear or the side. That's something that's unique to the residential district as opposed to a commercial district that, you know, that's just fine in. Uh, the DMU and EMU districts both have some parking lot requirements that are specific to those zoning districts. So that's just kind of references to to the reader there to be aware of those. Um, and then in industrial districts, uh, we currently do have some provisions for, um, gravel to be used. It's, it's really, uh, not written very clearly. And so this was kind of a first attempt at cleaning up some of the language to make it more clear on, uh, when and where gravel can be allowed. Uh, there is still a requirement that we have, the current requirement is 50 feet, but we would, we're proposing to update at least within 100 feet of a driveway onto a public street needs to be a paved surface to provide an opportunity to to knock off any, uh, gravel or loose dirt, things like that before, uh, the vehicle enters the public street. And then section four dash four five five here, these are the adjustments to off-street parking requirements. And so these are the opportunities to, for an applicant to reduce below the minimums required by that table. As I kind of alluded to earlier, the 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 concept here, and we'll clean up the language a little bit, but the concept is there's kind of two categories of parking reduction. The minor reduction would be the administrative process and then a more major reduction would be, uh, an approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, um, yeah, the number we have right now is parking reductions of up to 25% of the the minimum. If it's under 25%, that can be an administrative review process. If it's over the 25%, then it's required to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Below that, uh, there's kind of several different types of parking reduction, kind of several options that, uh, an applicant can can kind of choose to, um, pursue independently or in combination with each other. So a parking demand study, you know, for example, they could, uh, contract with a a traffic engineer to, um, to put together a parking study that demonstrates, uh, you know, a lesser need than what our table currently requires, for example. Uh, that's pretty common with unique facilities like a, you know, a regional, you know, park facility or something that that has tournaments, that just has widely varying, you know, demands. Um, that might be something that, uh, where a parking study might be utilized. Uh, next up is shared or off-site, uh, parking spaces. Um, that's for if, uh, if the parking spaces are in a lot nearby that they have access to, or maybe it's, um, two uses that are, um, kind of, uh, opposite of each other in terms of their peak demand. So like a church next to, uh, you know, some type of retail business that's, you know, closed on Sundays or something. You know, that's a kind of a classic, a classic example of a of a great partnership in terms of sharing the parking between those two uses.
Includes some kind of signage requirement or something?
It would require that the, uh, there'd be an agreement between the the two parties involved and that agreement would be to be submitted to the city. Um, and so
the, I see a couple spots in town, you could upside as well, courier.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I think it might be beneficial to share.
Yeah.
Be good to be custom.
Yep. Um, and so maybe that's a, you know, maybe that's a customizable agreement or something. So we can, we can kind of play with the language there. Um, the next section is proximity to a transit stop. So if it's a a use within 500 feet of a fixed transit stop, um, they can reduce their parking by up to ten, up to 10%. And lastly, affordable and senior housing. Um, this is kind of a incentive for affordable and senior housing in in a way. But, um, and oftentimes, these types of housing units don't, um, don't require as much parking as, um, you know, market rate apartments. Uh, and so that can be reduced up to 20% if at least of 25% of the dwelling units are, um, restricted for residents 55 years of older or older or are reserved for, um, certain, uh, income classifications. Next section is, uh, parking area design and maintenance. These are kind of some of the the general, just physical requirements in terms of, uh, surfacing, uh, access and maneuvering, um, parking stall dimensions. Not much has really changed here. It's just, again, reorganized. Uh, this table is is, I believe, pretty much unchanged from our current ordinance. And then the accompanying graphic that just corresponds to the table in terms of some of the the physical dimensions for a parking lot. Uh, then I think lastly is our loading standards. And so, um, for larger businesses requiring, um, off-street loading spaces, so a truck unloading goods, um, some some requirements, like it can't, it has to be positioned so the truck isn't backing out onto public streets, for example, um, different things like that, um, some of the specific design standards for those types of, um, loading areas. So that's, that's really it for the parking proposal there. Any other questions on on that?
You are targeting for March?
That's, that's, uh, what we're targeting right now, but that's not to say that we, you know, wouldn't push it back if we needed to, if we have other priorities that that come up or we need more time to, you know, work through a specific, you know, tweak or something.
Sure.
So if there's no other questions on that one, I can move on. Um, so the, uh, pool fence regulations. So this is actually somewhat of a newer, um, regulation. I think it was at the end of, towards the end of 2021, uh, the city updated the pool fencing regulations to require that applicants, um, apply for and, um, get a permit when, um, installing a pool. Uh, the primary reason for doing that was to ensure that a fence was being installed with the pool. Uh, the city has always, or at least in recent history, has required a six-foot fence to completely surround, um, pools. And so the the ordinance amendments in 2021 was to clarify some of those requirements, require that, um, if somebody is installing a pool, that they get a permit through our inspections office and that, uh, staff is verifying that they have a fence around their their pool and that goes in. So that's only been in effect about a year and a half now in terms of that, um, the licensing requirement or the, excuse me, the permitting requirement. Prior to, prior to that, there was no permitting requirement. And so if somebody wanted to install a pool, they can do so without any permit. And then we still, we did have a requirement for a six-foot fence. However, um, whether or not people were really aware of that or not is is questionable. Uh, we have had, um, a lot of public comment on our current requirements, which is why we're bringing this one forward. One, I think, uh, there's just a popular fence type out there that seems that, uh, that what we've heard is it only comes in five-foot heights. And so in order to meet the six-foot requirement, they're not able to get the type of fencing that they want. Um, in looking into our neighboring jurisdictions in Fargo and Morehead, um, Fargo's requirement, I believe, is four feet and Morehead's requirement is five feet. We're at six feet. And so what we're proposing is that, um, we, uh, kind of remove the the pool fencing requirements from the zoning code and just kind of revert back to the International Property Maintenance Code, um, which is a, which is one of our building codes, um, that specifically has a a pool and spa section included in it. And the, that requirement is a four-foot tall barrier around pools and spas. Uh, that does also include an exemption for certain types of, um, latches and covers for spas. But that is kind of, uh, a national standard. And so, um, our building official is comfortable with us, um, kind of leaning on that for our, in lieu of our kind of, uh, customized, um, six-foot ordinance that we have today. So that's, that's the high-level summary. Uh, we don't really have the the red lines for that one quite yet, but we'll bring, our intent is to bring that to you next month. Uh, included in the packet here, this is the, just to clip it from the International Property Maintenance Code. We actually do, um, adopt this code currently. So this code is on the books today. Um, but we also have the six-foot requirement. And so we, we kind of have two requirements. One's four-foot, one's six-foot. And so we would essentially just be removing the six-foot requirement and and kind of defaulting back to that four-foot requirement.
Aaron, would be walk around as well as, um, yeah, because mine either.
Yep. Yep. I think there is, uh, some requirements. So more than 24 inches deep. Uh, I thought there was again.
Was referencing, you just have to remove any access, the ladders or something like that?
Yep, there's some language about ladders.
Then blocked. You don't have to have a fence around it.
Yep. So that's something we have yet to do is just kind of compare the language that we currently have in Title IV to this language. And if there are things that this does not include that we currently have, you know, there may be a need to, you know, do some type of amendment to make sure that we're covering those things. But, um, I believe this is kind of the the industry standard in terms of, you know, homeowners homeowners insurance and stuff like that too, um, is typically that, um, that four-foot, I believe. But, um, again, uh, staff would be comfortable with four feet or five feet. I think it's really the the six-foot. It's is what's given a lot of folks heartburn on this one. So. Any questions on that? And lastly is a
Sorry, sorry. So if there are pools or hot tubs or whatever that are not compliant with, I'm just thinking of a lot, a lot of people have hot tubs. There's a reference to an STM standard there. If their cover isn't compliant with that standard today, are we gonna have hot tub police getting people in compliance or has this become, when does it, yeah?
Yeah. So, I mean, we, we, that's a good question. Uh, we do have, uh,
You made me buy a hot tub last year.
So the the requirements today, I think the the way the requirements today read is that, you know, if the hot tub is big enough to to meet the the minimum size, a fence is required. I don't think there is any current, um, exemption for those specific latching covers, um, in our Title IV ordinance today. And so that would be potentially one change is that if the, I got the exemption right here. So spas or hot tubs with a safety cover that complies with ASTM F1346 shall be exempt from the the barrier requirements. So that that is a potential change where you would not require, you may not be required to have a fence around your spa as long as you had that that type of cover. But in terms of your question, if people don't, that would be like any other violation, you know, we would have to handle that as as we are made aware of it. Uh, we do have a code enforcement team within our police department that, uh, follows up on citizen complaints and, um, for any of our ordinances. And, um, that's kind of how we would handle the enforcement action similar to anything else. So.
She'll have her, make sure she has her memory is inside.
Yeah.
Cause ruckus.
Any other questions on the fencing? So the last item here is our backyard chicken keeping. So a quick summary on this one, um, you may already be aware, but, uh, about a year ago now, the city commission directed the city attorney and staff to work towards drafting a backyard chicken ordinance similar to the ordinances that Fargo and Morehead have, uh, on the books. They also directed staff to conduct a, uh, a survey just to get some citizen feedback on, um, in relation to the the proposed ordinance. And so that has all been done now and we're looking to kind of restart that conversation. Um, we do, included in the the staff report here is just a kind of a first stab at at an ordinance. In in addition to kind of some of the revisions to Title, um, 11 here, which is our animal, um, ordinances, uh, anticipate we would have to update cer- certain sections of Title IV, um, just to alleviate or get rid of any confusion that might result in terms of certain restrictions that the zoning code currently has on animal keeping. Uh, right now chickens, for example, are permitted by right in our agricultural zoning district. They're permitted through a conditional use in our rural residential district, um, and I think pretty much prohibited everywhere else. And so, um, since that is a tweak to Title IV, uh, that would come through the Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing recommendation before, uh, moving on to city commission. And so, um, wanted to make you aware that we'll be trying to have something, um, on the agenda here next month. And so just wanted to give you a heads up on on that as well. Any questions on that one?
Fargo, uh, changed their ordinance a few years back, not too many years ago.
Yep.
I think they kind of mirrored Morehead, or at least they had planned to. Any feedback on how that has worked for them?
I, uh, I don't want to speak for any other, you know, jurisdiction there, but I think what we've kind of heard is it's relatively, there's relatively few number of people that actually, um, you know, go through and get a permit and and raise chickens. I think what I've heard is that they are relatively quiet. Oftentimes, a neighbor might not even know they're there until they actually see the chickens. Cause noise and smells and odors are always some of the common concerns. But, uh, included in the ordinance would be things like, um, standards for the enclosure. They would, they wouldn't be allowed to just be free roaming or anything in the backyard. They would have a coop and a run. Um, they would need to be kind of enclosed at all times. Uh, there's provisions for things like setbacks from neighboring property lines for those, um, chicken runs and enclosures. Um, and then limitations on the number of chickens as well. I think Morehead allows six, Fargo allows four. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think
They have a annual fee or registration or something as well.
Yep.
So you got the opportunity, at least if someone's letting them run all over, you can just not re-license them.
Correct.
The other, the other thing, just back in my old commission days, this came up, you know, someone wanted them. And and actually, the couple that had applied for them would have done a good job. They they were that type of people. But what happened, and it was up in north side of West Fargo, um, they were right on the river. And I I think we're leaning to, you know, let them go with it. But then when the neighborhood came in and brought four things we never thought about, you know, they had, they're kind of out in the, by the river, near the edge of town. They had skunks, foxes, naturally, before any chickens. You know, they had natural predators that live along the river and stuff like that. I guess my, I I'm not saying that people that do it right shouldn't be able to have chickens, but the only concern is, is there are areas in town that would be more susceptible to that type of scenario. And I don't know what the ordinances will have in them to, you know, a neighborhood has to go along with it. There's probably some developments that have their own covenants if they have an HOA or something. But at any rate, that should be, I think, a consideration. And I think that's, that's what swung the, at that time, I think that's what swung the commission to to say no, is because of the concern of the neighbors and that's, that's legitimate concerns. You don't want fox walking around your, you know, neighborhood looking for chickens or whatever they they're looking for to eat. So, uh,
Well, this would be, if there is a covenant of, you know, a fine neighborhood, that would override what this allows, right?
Yeah, I think the thing would be with, even if there, you don't have an HOA and you don't have covenants or whatever. don't have covenants or whatever, some considerations should be made as to where these might best be placed or not be placed, and I don't know how you'd regulate that. Maybe it's something they would get the permit, and if they had a problem with, all of a sudden predators showing up more frequently than they they would like them, then maybe something has to change, but I'm just saying, consider that, that aspect.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, as, if my neighbor wanted to put them in, I'd have no problem, as long as they did it nicely. I don't want them to go out there and drive some steaks in the ground and, you know, roll, you know, chicken wire around, call it, call it good, and I, my neighbors wouldn't do that, but at any rate, you know, there are some folks that think that's adequate and.
I think this draft was pretty specific on the type of structures that are.
Yeah, and that, that's good, as long as there's a way to check on it, because it's, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, so, at any rate, that's the only comment I'll make on is, is sometimes there's a, there's a bigger story than just the story of wanting to have chickens as a pet or a food supplier or whatever.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Very eclectic group.
Yes. Kind of is.
Parking, chickens.
We didn't get into science, though.
Didn't get into science. We're going to wait for Dave to be here.
So that's, that's all we've got for discussion agenda.
Well, thank you very much for that. Very informative, and it is, I'm I'm very thankful we're doing it this way, so we don't have to take action the first time we're hearing it. So this is, I think, an improved approach to these type of changes, so thank you. So, last item would be adjournment. Moved in a second to adjourn discussion agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
So, just to see the question. If we're in just a discussion agenda, you can't really make motions. So make motions?
No, to be, like, you know.
So you don't want to call adjournments or adjournments?
Yeah.
You're not, you're not taking it.
That's easier. But from the, the adjournment from the regular agenda, would be, okay, I'll handle it that way. I'm always confused on this procedural stuff, James.